will be, but this is, this is essentially what we went over last, last week. I'm just kind of talking about the market data. You'll see Exhibit A, it's a simplified pay plan. It basically has grades and then a minimum and a maximum pay. And what that means is that every year, the council will, especially when we get into performance pay, the merit-based pay section in 2021, the numbers that you see will increase based on what council direction is, but that doesn't mean that there will be an automatic increase like what we have right now. So in 2020, one of the bigger problems that we'd be working on is developing a merit-based pay performance plan and what the criteria are for those. We're not going that route or it's not recommended to go that route in 2020, but this is kind of the first step to get us to where, where I feel, based on input from city council and personnel budget that we want to go. I think it's a very good tool that we could use to help retain employees and reward high-performing employees.
So you've been a straight up group, but before you go on, maybe you could explain what the merit-based pay is all about and one of the reasons as to why we have to perhaps go down that road because of our grades and steps program basically being capped for many of our workers.
Yeah, yeah. So the performance-based pay, essentially you have your salary that you have. And what will happen is you'll get your root performance review and based on that performance review, there will be criteria based on what your score is. That gives the managers, myself, guidelines as far as what merit increases there will be. Now, like within that, that could include COLA or salary adjustments annually. But really what it does is it helps us reward the high-performing individuals that are in the city. And, you know, still, still have a path for people that are meeting expectations, but really, right now, the way the system is set up that we have is that if you meet expectations, you know, that, that you receive the same merit as somebody who's an exceptional employee. It's a, it's a trend change that we're seeing in municipalities recently. A lot of them, and when I first started here in 2016, 2017, we were looking at the grade step plan. It's the easiest to roll out. There isn't much required from managers as far as performance reviews because it's either you meet expectations or you don't. There's no real criteria for exceeding expectations or being a real premier employee. So we're going down that, that road. This is the first step. And I think that in 2021, I think we can, we can roll it out, at least for non-union employees. Thank you. I'll talk a little bit about implementation costs. We've had the time to look at these and personnel budget looked at a bunch of different levels of these. Initially, we, we had a 3% increase in implementation of this. We looked at what it would be for a 2.75 and a 2.5. And what we ultimately came up with was going at a 2.5% salary adjustment or COLA from 2019 to 2020. And then having a 2% increase if you meet expectations, if that step's available in 2020. And what that overall cost to implement was $109,556. That was roughly just under $5,000 less than what we had budgeted for. So that is, you'll see in the next item that we talked about related to the budget, there's, there's a levy decrease. This contributed a little bit to that levy decrease, but for the most part, you know, it is, it is a reduction. I think it's, it's, it's good for everybody. You know, the, the increase isn't what we've done in the past. We've done a 3% COLA every year for the last three years. But, you know, I think this really sets the table for, you know, personnel to really perform and be rewarded for in the future. A couple of the guidelines I'll touch base on again. Non-union employees would receive a 2.5 salary adjustment into 2020. Needs expectations, you'd get a 2%. And then in 2021, we'll, we'll move to a merit-based pay plan. And there'll be a policy, city council personnel budget will be heavily involved in developing that and providing feedback to, to staff on how we want to implement that. Union contracts, I'll talk briefly about that. The IUOE contract, the International Union of Operating Engineers, the one that really involves our public works folks. That is up this year and we're going to start negotiations as soon as we get some direction with what the pay plan is going to look like in 2020. So I could kind of use this to try to forge them ahead in this direction. It might be difficult. Typically, unions don't like to do straight pay with performance pay incentives, but, you know, that, that's where we'd like to go. So we'll, we'll, we'll attempt that. And then the IU or, sorry, LELS, the law enforcement contract. One of the clauses that was adopted when we passed that, that collective bargaining agreement was that if during this pay plan process, we would reopen the pay appendix of that section. So I'm going to be talking to that group too to see what's if we can kind of get them to go in the general direction that we're headed here with the non-union employees. What you have attached, there's a resolution, R2019-033. There are two exhibits in there, Exhibit A and B, exactly as you saw it on the, on the presentation here. What we're looking for is a motion to approve that resolution. And then what that would mean is that the, that staff, myself, we would implement that pay plan into 2020. And then work with city council and personnel budget to develop those policies related to the merit-based pay systems for 2021. If there are any questions, I'll entertain them.
I think we had a total of eight meetings with Personnel and Budget Committee, not only associated with the 2020 budget, but also obviously the Compensate Class Study. So I think that's probably at least 20 some odd hours we put into this, trying to get it to where it was palatable, not only for us, but also our employees and also for our citizens. So that said, you guys had the opportunity to look at this. Does anybody have any questions regarding anything that they've seen specifically about the compensation classification study? And also giving our city administrator the direction to go ahead and put this forth, January 1st, 2020. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to approve Resolution Romeo 2019-033, approving the compensation and classification study and directing our city administrator to proceed with implementation of the plan effective January 1st, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you have none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the docket is, Sixth Bravo, which is the 2020 final budget review. City Administrator approval?
Mayor H, members of the city council. Again, this was something we talked about last meeting. What we're really trying to do is just gather as much information from the city council related to the budget, utility rates, things like that, so that on December 9th, when we have our truth and taxation hearing, that we have a good, we have the final budget available at that time. And we did meet with the personnel and budget last week and got some good input and direction as far as where we wanted to go. I know a lot of the preliminary or proposed tax statements have gone out and some of the property values have increased significantly in, in the town. And that really has an effect on the actual taxes that, that you are levying for the city. One thing to keep in mind is that those numbers reflect the preliminary levy at 9.47%. The, the final tax numbers will obviously reflect the final adopted levy, which right now, based on some of the inputs that we've had, is at, I believe, 5.71%. So a significant reduction. The goal that we were shooting at is trying to get at 6% or below. We're slightly below that. One, a couple of the things I'll just touch base on about how we got there. We plugged in some of the numbers that we got for workers' compensation. We generally have a little contingency in there in the preliminary in case something occurs, as you foresee. The same with the general liability insurance and the same with the health insurance. So we have all those final numbers. We were able to plug those in. There still was a little bit where we wanted to reduce that, so what we looked at is just operational budgets and, and working with the Public Services Director to, to really refine those and get those as low as he could, he could possibly get. So those, that's for some of the other savings. And really, we, we didn't have to dive into any of the capital projects that we've identified. So those are all the same. You'll see those in the, in the packet. Those haven't changed, but really it's, it's some operational things. You know, we want to try to run as tight of a budget as we can in some of these areas. So those are where the changes were, but really, if, if anybody here, you know, I'll, I'll make the claim out to city council or anybody. If they want to come in and go over their tax statement and talk about, you know, why things are a certain way. I can really, we could, Zach and myself could talk pretty intelligently about the cities portion. The, the county and the school district, we can put them in contact with people that can really let them know what's going on with that. But we've been working with the county assessor to figure out some of these formulas for how these things are calculated. And it's, I mean, it's pretty complex. So if you, if you want to come in and learn about that, we can definitely, we can go through that process. But really what, what we, what we got hit with as a community as far as residents go is the average residential single-family house went up to 19, a little over 19% on average. So I've seen some as low as 5% and some as high as 45%. So it's all over the board. So it's really, look at your tax statement. If you have questions on how this all works, definitely come in and we can, we can help, help talk about it. And just know that the number that you get in there from the city is going to go down, you know, probably by, I don't know, the formula is dictated, so it's not a linear deal, but, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30% lower than what, what is on the statement. So really, we can go through the summary stuff. There really isn't much there. We have updated, all of this, the water rates are the same as, as the last meeting. The electric charges, they're all the same. The only change that was made is the refuse rate. And what the, what the group personnel budget came up with is, in general, we, we generate about $30,000 in this admin fee. And the admin fee goes towards some personnel salaries here because we have, we have admin staff up front that, that answer phone calls and direct things to waste management as far as bins go, bin replacements, garbage bins that don't get picked up. So there's, there's some costs there. And then there's also costs related to the tipping fees for the spring and fall cleanups. And then there was one other charge.
Electronics.
Oh yeah, the electronics recycling as well. So we pay for that through the admin fees. And we've, we've run, we, we, I think we have two boxes, these boxes that you can recycle electronics. We, we started off with two. Now we generally go up to about 10 per, per year. So, and they're eight, eight, eight or $900 apiece.
About $900.
$900 apiece for these boxes, but, so we've been using admin fees to cover those, you know, the electronics and, and the way that they're almost disposable in a sense, they, you know, they don't last probably as long as they used to and they're cheaper than, you know, than they have ever been. We get a lot of computer monitors, screens, TVs, things like that that are brought to the wastewater. So these boxes are filling up and we feel it's, it's, it's good to do that because what we found is, you know, even with some of the spring and fall cleanup stuff, if somebody from out of town comes in that isn't a resident, that shouldn't be there, if we turn them away, you know, there's a likelihood that they're going to, that they may throw, throw their, throw their stuff somewhere in the country, right? So, and then maybe even in some cases somewhere in town. So we pick the stuff up anyway. So it's a good service to add. One thing I will add is that the, the contract that we have with Waste Management, it goes through the year 2020. We're going to have a, a, a good conversation about, do we want to move forward with another RFP? I think either way, we need to renegotiate the contract to include some of these more modern things. We have a lot of ideas as far as some things we want included, but we also, you know, I think the baseline is we want to keep those base rates down. So one thing you will notice is that the, the senior fee went from a dollar 30 to a dollar 35. And that was, that was through direction of the, of the personnel budget. And the idea is that some of those additional admin fees could go towards some of those electronic recycling, you know, if those increase over the next year. Are there questions about refuse?
I got a question for probably Zach. Do the math on the 2020 96 gallon.
What do you mean?
Add up. Cause I don't think 2599 is the right number there.
Yeah, 18, $2, 351, 231. Should be 2.
99. I was trying to figure out why it was going down next year for the 96 gallon.
Oh, that's right. So 17 cents plus 51 cents is 68 cents, plus 31 cents is 99 cents. 18 plus 2 is 20, plus 3 is 23, plus 2 is 25.
Yeah.
So are we legitimately doing a decrease on the 96?
Yeah. And the reason why is because the admin fee, so the admin fee was 245 before and now it's only $2. So even with a 2% increase from 1782 to 1817, you're still lowering 45 cents. And that difference there is only 35 cents.
Yeah. So, so what you'll see, if I, if I chime in, you'll see some of the larger containers that had the higher admin fees, they're going to see a reduction in their, in their prices because of the admin fee going down, down to $2. So some of those are at 3, what, 245, 360 for a 296 gallon container. So you'll see that 2, 296, that one went up a little bit, but yeah, the 96 gallon one, it looks like it went down 4 cents. So it's a product of just leveling out that admin fee.
And again, the admin fee was based on the recommendation that you had.
Right.
At the last meeting, that why does it make sense to go ahead and have different rates, you know, when in essence it's basically the same?
Yeah. And, and I'm glad to see that change. I do think, I mean, admin fee should be fair across the board. I don't think we should be adjusting it as what size you have.
Yeah. So some of the figures, and you'll see in the packet itself, the, the depreciation total bill wasn't updated. Those were handed out tonight. So if you look at those, you know.
The next one.
Yeah.
So that is right.
So this one, this one is updated. So it's, it's basically for an average customer, we'll call average, 6,000 gallons per month and 450,000 kilowatt hours of electricity, your bill would go up to about $5.57. Going through this, you'll see adding in the information related to the 5.71% tax or levy increase. If your home doesn't go up, which, you know, that didn't happen, if that happened, you're probably lucky. You'd actually see a reduction in your monthly costs. If your home value went up, you know, the, the 12% from 189, 100, which is what we determine that the average house value is in 2019 to just under 212, you'll see roughly a $23.79 increase per month. Or five, 2, 285.54 cents per year.
Tax-wise.
Tax-wise.
Including both the taxes and the utilities?
Yes, and, and, and the preliminary numbers from the county and the school. So that's an overall look at what your tax bill plus our utility bill increases would be. Now, the, the county might come back and they might do what we did and reduce their, their levy amount when they adopt their final levy. The school really doesn't have any power to adjust that. That's set by referendum. So the, the one thing I did notice on a lot of property tax statements is that the school portion went up significantly percentage-wise. And that's all done through a calculation based on that referendum that was passed. So you might see a 15% property intent increase, but then your, your school portion, the referendum base, might go up 30%. And that's all based on whatever the formula is that they use to determine those numbers. So, and those are all set by voter, voter approval, the, the school district. The county, they, they go through the same process that we do through, through a board and they set that every year. So in general, you know, we're looking at nothing, nothing too dramatic as far as what these are. The issue that we see and the questions that have come up are mostly related to those estimated market values going up significantly. And in some cases, when that happens, your homestead exclusion will go down. So it's kind of a double whammy where your taxable market value will increase, could increase significantly. So if anybody's got questions about it, we, Jack and I would be more than happy to go over to property tax statements. You know, homestead exclusion kind of gets people sometimes too because that's, you know, that's scalable depending on where you come in as far as your estimated market value is.
For the benefit of our citizens, City Administrator too, but would you be kind enough to kind of walk us through the process that the county uses to do the appraisals on or does, does the assessor assessments on the various properties and what requirements are?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll gladly do that. So generally, the, the county has to look at every property every five years. Sometimes that happens, you know, every other year or it might be five years. What they did, what the county's done in 2019 is they did a very extensive evaluation of, of properties. And they use, you know, one physical, you'll like to go to your property and look and see what you have. They might use market data from homes that are similar to yours that have sold in the community. They might use a combination of that. We do submit our building permits to the county and they look at those and they say, well, you built a new deck. So we're going to come look at it. In some cases, it might be a replacement of an existing deck, you know? But they're going to go out there, look at it. They'll use the data we give them. There isn't a mechanism for them to visit a property and tell us that, wait, they added a deck. That question's come up to say, well, if somebody added a deck without getting a permit, you know, that's something that we could go back and, and get, you know, make them get a building permit and inspect it, make sure it saves, things like that. So there isn't that mechanism built in, you know, there's counties that have that. La Sure County, I think, is going in that direction. But keep in mind, La Sure County doesn't, doesn't require building permits outside of, they don't require building permits. The only one, in La Sure County are only municipalities that require building permits. So they may be going that route. That's a county direction, but they haven't done that yet. So they're, they're looking at a bunch of different data points and they're plugging them into a system to figure out what your estimated market value is. And then having it run through a bunch of calculations related to formulas for referendums and levy increases for the general municipalities that you might live in, and then they're coming up with what that is. So, and really what they, what they need to come up with is their best guess to be able to get us our certified levy amount at the end of the day. So we tell them what our levy amount is and they figure out what that is as far as our taxes go.
Would it be fair to assume then that within the last five years, every property within the city of La Sure has been looked at by the county?
I would say it, it would be fair. I've got some questions to the county to see actually how many they did in 2019. It could have been all of them. I don't think there, there isn't a requirement that you go physically look at them. You can make some assumptions. So I think it's probably fair to say that every property has been looked at in some manner, either looking at market data, building permits, physical inspections in the last five years.
Thank you. Councilmember families.
I can, I can say that at least one of our properties was, that was inspected by, let's see, on 2016, 2017 and 2018 for the same, the same property. And that one went up over $35,000 too, just in that one hit. There's a lot of us that got hit.
Oh, if, if I may, I wanted to just talk about the, the process to dispute those, those estimated market values. So in February or March, you'll get something in the mail from the county saying what your proposed estimated market value or evaluation of your house is. In April, you have the opportunity to dispute then. So if you think that it's too high, you can go into the county and make your case to have it reduced. And if they say, yep, you know, it's no longer 150,000, it's 140,000, then that'll be reflected on your tax bill. But that process is in, in, in February, March. The, the hearing is in April and that'll happen again in 2021. So the time has passed to dispute your valuations for 2020. But if you think that they're high and you think you have good evidence to say they should be lowered, definitely it's, it's your, it's your right to go in and dispute that and provide that evidence to the county assessor. And then ultimately it goes to the county board to, to figure out if that's, that's the true valuation. So you're not disputing the taxes that you're being assessed. You're disputing the valuation of your house. If you want to dispute the taxes that the city's levying, the, the proper time to do that would be the truth and taxation hearing. That's held on December 9th this year. So you can still do that. If you, if you're, if you're a citizen of La Sure and your, your tax, you can come in and participate in that public hearing and, and tell us how you feel about your taxes.
And this property tax statement that you're referring to, this is the same statement that we all use when we file our income taxes, especially for the Minnesota portion, because it shows what the current year is and what the future year is. So yeah, again, but April or I'm sorry, February, March timeframe is when that does come in. You can't file your Minnesota taxes without it.
Yeah. So again, if anybody has questions about their tax statements, we're more than happy to help out and talk about it. So again, the, the, moving on to the CIP, CEP, there haven't been any changes. I didn't, we haven't changed anything based on those numbers as far as what you saw last week. So this, in my mind, at least for 2020, is, is final. You know, pending some direction from the city council, but there are some projects on here, like the taxiway extension project for the airport with utilities. You know, that one will, will be kind of fluid as we talk more with the EDA about that and the Airport Commission and obviously the city council, if there's some funding that's required through there. But that, that one is one that, that we have, I, I need to talk about the pickleball courts and the acoustic panels at the ice arena are all ones that are contingent on some sort of outside funding. Otherwise, everything else is either funded through our capital improvement plan, capital equipment plan fund or enterprise funds with the same intent. So if, I believe that's, that's it. So next steps, if there's, if there's feedback from city council, really we're kind of at the end of the road as far as the budget process goes, but don't, don't think that that means we can't change anything. We do have the truth and taxation hearing where we adopt the, the final levies and the, and the budgets for the general fund and all of the enterprise funds on December 9th. There will be a public hearing at that point in time, but really I think we're in a good spot as far as the general levy goes and our, our plan with utility rates. One thing I will note, we are planning on having a meeting on the 23rd, just a, a kind of a housekeeping meeting that day. Hopefully it'll be pretty quick. But so this won't be our last meeting of the year. If, if we need to, we can extend this. I don't, I don't see anything on the roadmap for this that would show that we would need to push this back and, and do it on the 23rd. But we do have a contingency, so we can always fall back on that if we want. So what we're looking for is this general direction. If you feel comfortable, we'll continue on. If there's things we want to look at, we can definitely, definitely look at that.
Is there anybody that has anything that they'd like to go ahead and input into city staff between, or tonight, so that we can go ahead and have anything taken care of prior to our December 9th meeting? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a comment was made about the 23rd of December, to be clear. Jasper, if we had Jasper explain, we are required to meet. We don't have a choice.
That is true. So in the charter, we're required to meet the second and fourth Monday of every month. You know, that'll be something that we'll look at, at the Charter Commission and see if that makes sense. You know, if, if we need some flexibility, how we can. There, we'll be looking at some ordinance stuff as well because there's also language in the ordinance related to how we change meeting dates and things like that as well. So we're going to look at it comprehensively and, and there will likely be some, some changes.
I'd like to thank Director Dobbs for all your hard work on this exercise. It was certainly very time-consuming. Thank you to both you and also to our city administrator for getting us in the right direction for 2020.
Thank you.
That said, let's go ahead and move on now to Sixth Charlie, which is the Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission or what we call MRFB, city administrator approval.
Mayor H, members of city council, before you, you'll see four agreements I'll talk about in summary related to the potential dissolution of Minnesota, well, really the JPA that formed the Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission. So staff has been working with the city of Henderson to dissolve this joint powers agreement that formed MRFB. In September, September 24th, 2018, the city council officially approved a resolution that should, that declared our intent to dissolve it. So that was kind of the point where it, it got pretty serious related to talking about the dissolution of this. So staff, legal counsel, the public facilities authority staff, the pollution control agency and personnel that, that our city of La Sure personnel that work at the wastewater plant. We've all, all been talking about this to help provide some guidance to have an orderly dissolution of this JPA. We wanted to do it in a manner that we still maintain a relationship with Henderson. It's important. Our facility is a regional facility. We wanted to make sure that 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 still serves that purpose. And that was one of the requirements through PFA is that it was a still, that was the intent that the that the bonds were issued and that's the intent that they wanted to continue is that it's a regional treatment facility. The city of Henderson evaluated these these agreements as you see them in your packet and as we'll describe them tonight. They approved these all on November twentieth, twenty nineteen, at their last meeting on Wednesday. So, that that triggered us to to bring this forward today. So, as I alluded to, there were four agreements. We have a Joint Powers Board dissolution agreement. We have a Joint Powers Board trade agreement, Henderson and La Sure Force Main and Lift Station cost share agreement, and a Sewer Wastewater Service contract. I'll go through each one of these and go through, and if you have questions after each one, we'll kind of entertain it because there's a lot of agreements and a lot of stuff going on here. So, the Joint Powers Board dissolution agreement. Summary of this is the dissolution will officially take place on November thirtieth. City administration from Henderson and La Sure will close on all the accounts as quickly as is feasible and legally permissible. There is a MIRPUC meeting tomorrow, and if I've talked to the chair, the mayor, sent emails about this, what what we would want done at that meeting, if these agreements are done, is basically just to approve the the bills if there's quorum and then to acknowledge that they that you've received, notice that this is this dissolution has occurred. So, that's that's really the only intent. I know there's some other things on the agenda, but it could be cut short if if these are these are adopted tonight. All after all accounts are closed out, the remaining fund balance will be split between Henderson and La Sure, twenty-seven percent, seventy-three percent respectively. Those numbers are significant because they were the numbers that were in the original joint powers agreement. That was a negotiating point that we had because really Henderson hasn't used that much of the the plan in the facility. So, La Sure will take on the remaining PFA payments of Henderson's loan. In the agreement, there's a schedule for that. Roughly, that's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Now, there's some there's some things going on here. We're really, we're taking the total amount of their PFA loan. We're giving them a credit. We're saying, we're gonna buy this portion, basically of the wastewater facility from you for one point two million dollars. The loan that they have is just over one point eight, so we're buying, you know, basically one of... We're buying a facility that was three point eight million dollars or one point two million dollars, but then we're re-amortizing Henderson's PFA loan and letting them pay us back over twenty years. So, it's attractive to them because it spreads out their debt at an interest-free level. This, again, was a negotiating point, one of the most diligently debated and looked at ones. But really, what happens, and you'll see in the actual formula about how they're going to pay us, is they'll pay us a per thousand gallon flow charge, and then there's a adder of when we get there. It's just over four thousand dollars per month that they'll pay over twenty years. And that covers the the gap between the one point two and the one point eight plus three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in future capital costs. So, it's a balance and and understand that this was all negotiated. This obviously took some time, you know, over a year, a pretty pretty hard back and forth negotiation. So, to get where we're at, it's taken some time. So, Henderson will be required to obtain a separate sewer system permit from the NPCA. Basically, that's on them to be permitted correctly. All titles, license agreements, and other legal documents will be transferred to La Sure by June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And what that'll entail is getting our legal counsel involved and doing a title search and looking for anything that's related to MIRPUC and then going through the motions to get all of that transferred to the city of La Sure. I'll reiterate, La Sure will charge Henderson a treatment cost of one dollar and twenty cents per thousand gallons of wastewater treated, and we'll adjust that amount annually using CPI Midwest. So, the first the first billing cycle, it's actually gonna start December first, twenty nineteen, and it'll go through twenty twenty. So, it won't be adjusted this first year. That dollar twenty will go, basically, they'll get a dollar twenty for December and then all of twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, that'll be adjusted based on the CPI. We have to give them notice by August as far as what that'll be. So, we'll have to we'll have to stay on that and give them official notice once that comes around.
Is the reason for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty date in essence to allow Henderson ample time to go ahead and submit their permit request for sewer and to have the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency go ahead and respond with that permit? Or does that have nothing to do with it?
It has nothing to do with it. It's really just how long I think it'll take our legal counsel to get all that paperwork transferred. The permit stuff, that's all on Henderson to get figured out. And the separate sewer system permit process is is a lot different than an actual discharge permit, because they're not discharging anything. They're just sending their wastewater to us. So, a little different, but good question. And then La Sure will charge Henderson a monthly amount, a monthly fee of four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents, which provides PFA loan and capital improvement considerations over the term of twenty years. So, one thing I want to make sure is clear with the group that's included in the in the agreement is that if Henderson says they want to leave this agreement after ten years, they don't, that that capital cost is just a rolling cost. They won't pay a lump sum if they want to cancel, but they will pay a lump sum for the PFA. So that basically, as long as they're sending us wastewater, they're gonna give us X amount for capital improvement cost every month. So, it's it's clear in the agreement. I want to make sure this we talked about it and that it's that it's known that that four thousand, there's a there's a summary sheet, basically an amortization schedule included in the agreement. And that shows, let's say Henderson wants to leave this agreement in twenty thirty-two, it says what the payoff amount is. So, just just to make sure that's clear, that the capital improvement is just a monthly charge and it's not something that they've committed to. We wouldn't recoup, I I mentioned before, it's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but that's spread over twenty years. We wouldn't recoup the remaining balance of that three sixty if we if if they got out of that that agreement. So, it's just that it's basically a monthly fee.
And these fixed payments of thirty-two, three forty-eight, eighty-eight is basically one of the numbers. The other number would be the nineteen thousand for capital maintenance, so that we actually are looking at fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty-eight over the course of the year?
I I believe. I I can do the math. It'd be that forty-two, seven, forty-two, seventy-nine, oh, seven times twelve.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So, that that amortization schedule the mayor's referencing is just for the PFA repayment. And I think that's exhibit B.
So, it's another nineteen K per year for maintenance.
For capital is what we're getting. So, and that's something that came at the end of the agreement, you know. One of the one of the directions that I got from city council was we need to recoup something for capital costs, and that's what that came up with. So, I think it's fair. You know, I think that overall, these agreements are all are fair for the for the communities based on what our each individual goals are. So, yeah, if Henderson desires to end this agreement prior to the twenty-year term, the remaining balance, as indicated in exhibit B, will be required to be paid to La Sure. So, those are, that's the summary of the Joint Powers Board dissolution agreement. Are there any questions? Okay, I will move on. And if something something pops up, you know, some of these other agreements, let me know. This Joint Powers Board trade agreement, now, this was essentially driven by the Public Facilities Authority and said, hey, you know, we issued these bonds. We want to make sure that the intent of this facility remains the same as when we issued this bond. And this was kind of what they came up with as far as what we could do to make sure that 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 remains the same. So, this agreement was required by the PFA. It agrees to dissolve the JPA. Henderson allows La Sure access to all facilities downstream and from and including the Henderson station, or Henderson Station Road Lift Station. And then La Sure agrees to make these PFA payments similar to the the first agreement that we had. So, you'll see some redundancies in these agreements, and they all tie together. They they all, you know, meld together. They could be one agreement, but we decided to be clear and be able to discuss it. We we should do four. So, that's all the joint the the trade agreement is. Are there any questions? All right, moving on to the next agreement, the Henderson and La Sure Force Main and Lift Station Cost Share Agreement. So, there's an area between the cities of Henderson and La Sure that are outside of city limits, essentially, for the most part, that when we were negotiating, nobody really wanted to take control of it. But it's essential for Henderson to send their waste to La Sure, some of these this infrastructure. So, what we came up with was this cost share agreement because I'll pull up this map so you can look at this. And you can see the lift station on the bottom right, that's the Henderson Station Road Lift Station. And then the one on the top left is the the Henderson Main Lift Station. So, the area that we're talking about is the area, not including the two lift stations, but the Force Main and the the lift station in the middle, the intermediate lift station. Who's gonna maintain this infrastructure? What this says is that proportionally to the flow that goes through the pipe is who's gonna maintain it. So, right now, what that means is Henderson is one hundred percent of the flow that goes through this pipe. They will they will maintain this at one hundred percent of the cost share. If the city of La Sure, if we grow to the north and we start annexing properties and building houses or businesses, and we start using that Force Main that's upstream of Henderson Station Road, the lift station, or started downstream, then that would mean that we would have to pay something on that. So, basically, that area between the two arrows is the area that we're that this agreement really looks at. And right now, as it stands, because of the flow, the city of La Sure has zero flow going through that, so Henderson would maintain it. That could change. It depends on what happens out there and what the city does as far as growth.
To be clear, if you could go back, please?
Yep.
To be, yeah, to be clear, the lift station that's located in Henderson, now, that is one hundred percent their responsibility?
Correct, yep. That is one hundred percent their responsibility. So, really, the the responsibility pertaining to the city of La Sure starts at the Henderson Station Road Lift Station, the lift station in the bottom bottom right of the the figure here. It could change. This cost share agreement could shift more towards La Sure if there's growth, and that's that's really the only trigger for that. Let's see if there's anything else in here, but really, oh, in this agreement, the city of La Sure will maintain those facilities, like we are right now through the MIRPUC agreement. So, what that means is that if there's something that's going on at that lift station, our staff will go out, fix it, maintain it. But then we will then bill that back based on that cost share. So, right now, if a pump goes out and we have to go down there and replace that pump or coordinate some things, any of that time would be reimbursed from Henderson at at full-time expenses. So, any questions on this agreement? All right, moving on to the final agreement, and this is the Sewer Wastewater Service Contract. So, this outlines the sewer treatment agreement with Henderson starting on December first, twenty nineteen. So, lines up with the dissolution happening on the thirtieth of November. It's a twenty-year term. We have daily limits for flow, total suspended solids, CBOD and phosphorus. So, those numbers are defined in the agreement. One thing that we, one of the last things that were negotiated was a phase-in of the flow. When we first started these conversations, Henderson didn't, hasn't ever had a year like twenty nineteen as as far as the the flooding of the the river and what kind of infiltration and intrusion they have. So, they've actually, I think, averaged about a hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons per day in twenty nineteen, which is which is huge. So, what they have and what we're striving for is to get them down to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand gallons. What we have developed is a phase-in plan twen- from starting in December first, twenty nineteen, until the end of twenty twenty, they they're allowed two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day. In the year twenty twenty-one, they're allowed two hundred thousand gallons per day. And then in twenty twenty-two, they're down to that one sixty-eight thousand per year. So, that's a phase-in approach to that. That allows them to start planning to do some some infrastructure repair, do some slip lining, things like that, to get them down more consistently to where they should be as far as the community, their sizes. So, to put it in perspective, they pump, I think, on average, about eighty thousand gallons out of the ground every day. And, you know, they've averaged two hundred and ninety-five thousand gallons of water going down the pipe to the plant every day. So, they have they have pretty significant INI is what it's called. So, they're gonna work on things to try and repair that, I think, to get that going in their city. So...
Was it two ninety-five or one ninety-five?
Uh, two ninety-five average per per day in twenty nineteen. So, pretty significant. Right now, so what that means is that there's a fine schedule in there, and what we're going to do is we're gonna put that in the governmental fee schedule that you see, and city council will have the ability to adjust that. The fines are pretty similar to what they would be at MIRPUC right now, and we're using that as kind of a baseline. But, you know, we're gonna look at it operationally. As things change, we might come and ask city council to to revise those fines. So, what that means is that on a daily occurrence regarding flow and all the of the other analytes, if there's ever any exceedance based on those criteria, Henderson would then receive an additional billing component to their monthly bill, very similar to what what goes on in MIRPUC right now for billing. So, for example, if they average, you know, in December, if they average two hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day, they'll get basically a dollar ten times, a dollar ten is the fine amount for flow per thousand gallons, times ten units per day. So, it'd be about a twelve-dollar fine per day if they exceeded by that. But as you can imagine, if they're getting up to five hundred thousand gallons per day, that that fine amount could get get kind of high, and it creates an incentive for them to actually fix their infrastructure, which which doesn't really exist right now with the way that MIRPUC billing billing exists. So, I think that'll help that that'll help the administration over there to achieve some of their goals that they that they want. So, so there's a flow TSS, CBOD, and phosphorus daily limit. Over just fines that are related to these items are defined and set by city council. The rate, again, will be a dollar twenty per thousand gallons. We'll adjust that annually, starting in one-one of twenty twenty-one. We will give them notice. I think it's as far back as August is when we have to give them notice as far as what that is. So, it'll be a rolling CPI adjustment. The in this agreement, it reiterates that Henderson will incur no capital cost other than defined in the monthly fee for the duration of the agreement. So, we're capturing some of that money annually, the nineteen thousand dollars annually. That's, we can't go to them and say, hey, our clarifier, you know, broke. We need to, you know, you guys need to pay for a third of it or something like that. That that, we can't do that with this agreement. And if Henderson will consistently exceed the maximum daily limits, we can indicate that we want to renegotiate the agreement. And likely, what'll occur is if they're exceeding them regularly, the fine amount will make them want to renegotiate. So, but we have the right to to tell them, while you're exceeding these daily limits on a regular basis, we need to renegotiate this deal. So, that's that's the summary of all four of the agreements. What we're looking for is the, look at each agreement individually. Consider passing a motion approving each each resolution and go from there, but I'll entertain any questions.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Jasper, can you go back to that slide that talked about the, where you had the map and the cost sharing? So, essentially, that lift station, that intermediate lift station, that's down by like the county park down there?
Yeah, right, yep.
So, if La Sure expands them to the north of where our city limits currently is, how much of that would we take on for our cost sharing? Would we take effectively all the way to Henderson? Or would we go into the lift station?
No. So, what what would happen is if we would expand, let's say, you know, in this area and we we have our corporate limits here, we'd be on the hook for the the proportion of the Force Main in here. We wouldn't have any, we don't have anything going through the lift station. It would just be the the equipment that we have and the construction.
So, it would just go as far as city limits?
Yeah, correct. So, it would be broken up and and say, yep, you know, we have, there's some valves and things like that in that section, but we would be only on the hook. The only time we'd have to get up into this area is if we would annex up in this area. At this time, you know, I think maybe in two thousand and eight, there was maybe some ideas that things were gonna expand pretty quickly. And there, I think, from what I've understood is that there was some fighting going on about, you know, who's gonna have access to this because I think some of the the early Henderson priority growth area plans had them going out into under the highway nineteen area, and some of ours had that, or some of the ideas we had went out there too. So, I don't I don't see that happening, but it 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 very well could. But, yeah, we, so, I think, you know, if we go this far, if we annexed it, this parcel gets annexed, then we're not on the hook for for the lift station.
Anything creepy?
Yeah. And the one good thing, to all this note, is that the pumps in this lift station have been replaced in the last year. So, that's something that we hope that doesn't happen very frequently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Fabulous.
So that everybody's clear with it, the fines on Henderson's end for overages is not much at, at all. It's compared to what, um, AgroPier was, what the city of Lesure has had in the past. Really what we're getting from them, um, it's, it's relatively clear. The worst part that we have is the amount of silt and gravel that winds up coming through. And that's one of the reasons why the pump, uh, why they were getting, you know. So having the $19,000 a year isn't, it's not going to do tons for the facility. When you look at, we, we spent that in two pumps. Uh, however, um, the fines, we're not going to be seeing large amounts of money coming off of fines from Henderson with the amount of flow they go through there.
For the benefit of everybody out there, our MRF Puck, our Minnesota River Valley Public Utility Commission consists of council member Huntington, council member Sullivan, and it's chaired by council member Fabiles. And with that said, I would like to ask the three of you, you guys have put an awful lot of time in here along with our city staff. Is there anything that you guys would have to offer regarding any of this information that our city administrators just covered relative to the four different resolutions that we're asked to look at tonight?
Just may point out too, there's three other members in these three.
Oh, yeah. And, yeah, there's three members from the city of Henderson as well. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Huntington?
No, actually, I think this is, um, I appreciate what Jasper has done and in-law over at Henderson and what they've come up with. I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with it, so.
Councilmember Sullivan.
I'm satisfied, satisfied as well with it, and I appreciate the work that's been put into it. Essentially, when I brought us back to this map, that was a huge point of contention when we were having conversations about having to take this whole section on when it really doesn't affect anybody in the city of Lesure, this section of pipe, these lift stations. It solely serves a purpose of the city of Henderson. So that's why I brought us back to that point. I was just curious where, I, I kind of understood my, the answer to my question prior to this. But I just want to make it clear that essentially, if the city of Lesure expands, we're only responsible up to that point.
Okay, great. And MRF Puck Chair Fabiles, anything, sir?
Um, that the dissolution really needed to happen. Um, I've, I've been with MRF Puck for three years now. Um, the, going in, it was obvious that, uh, that it needed more of a business end to it. And the more we started looking at the business end, the more we discovered that really, MRF Puck had hired the city of Lesure to, to run the facility. Any chance of being able to have our own employees, um, to run the facility, um, it really wouldn't have worked. It wouldn't have worked because of the benefit of having, uh, full-time and part-time employees that work both wastewater and water in the city. So they can rotate in and out. And when you have, uh, when you have employees that would take on vacations or get sick or things like that, um, the city had ample resource to be able to swap in and out. It was falling apart on the business end of things when you look at it because the decisions that need, needed to be made, um, you'd have to wait once a month to be able to get people together to make those decisions when we have a staff that's perfectly capable of making those decisions. Now, we're still going to, the three of us here are still going to see the same bills coming through. It's going to be in a, in a topic on, on our, on our bills for all of us to approve. And everybody's going to see the painful aspect of what some of these parts actually cost to run this. Um, but it, it, it became obvious that, that this is a saving aspect even to our city. Um, to have it so that, uh, uh, we're not wasting staff time to be late at night to come in for our meetings. And, uh, it, it doesn't need to be that way. This, you look at water and you look at, um, our electric, and you don't have a commission for running these things. There's nothing about this plant that requires having a JPA. There's nothing about this plant that requires having a commission to be able to run it. Um, and really, the only reason it was formed was because the powers that be at the time had kind of some grandiose plans that it would be a moneymaker. And we found that you're not going to make money doing this. It doesn't work that way. Um, and it wasn't because you were going to make money off of the, uh, off of the customers as much as what you were going to do with that waste. And the thought that you would be able to sell that waste, it doesn't work. We're just lucky if we can get somebody to take it off our hands for us.
Well, again, for the benefit of everybody that's watching us or in attendance here tonight, we have about 15 different boards, commissions and committees for city government here in the city of Lesure. And these three individuals are our subject matter experts. It's like whether the airport commission or economic development authority, whatever it may be, we have oversight, four city council on everything. And we rely very heavily, in this particular case, on these three individuals. Because they're actually, uh, fighting the fight on a daily basis. And, uh, I want to personally thank the three of you for everything that you guys have done over the last three years regarding MRF Puck. And I certainly want to go ahead and thank our city administrator for all the conversations he's had with the city administrator over there in Henderson and getting all this finally to a point where we can actually do something like this. So with that said, does anybody, council member Kirby or council member Crookman, did you guys have anything, either for our three members of, of, uh, the MRF Puck or for our city administrator?
I just kind of have a lighter question, not really pertaining MRF Puck. But I just kind of want to know what the sense is with the Henderson community. I mean, we do share a school district with them. We share commerce with them. We share a lot of different resources with them. I mean, is this thing setting okay with them? How's our public relations look with this?
I think it's the best it's been in a long time, you know, between the administration aspect of it. I think, um, you know, we're communicating. Like I said before, I think that this isn't a bad deal for anybody, you know? Going into this knowing that we're, the city of Lesure are in a position where, you know, we're the ones who want to get out of this agreement. We, we declared that. Um, you know, puts us in a, a tougher negotiating stance. But overall, I think we achieved our goal. I think Henderson achieved their goal. So I think we're, we're all happy.
That was a fantastic question because you're right. We want to make sure that we have a good relationship with, uh, our folks over there in Henderson. So thank you for asking that. Councilmember Crookman, did you have anything, sir?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. With that said, I want to pay, oh, I'm sorry, council member Sullivan.
Just, just to piggyback on your statement and show appreciation, I do, I think it's important for us to take a, a moment and pre, to show appreciation of the city council members from Henderson that are counterparts on the board. The last few months have been very, the last six, eight months have been very challenging. Um, just, uh, having conversations about disbanding, um, giving forums. And just the last four or five months, there's been a strong willingness to do the hard work and get it done. So I'd just like to say thank you to our three counterparts from Henderson as well.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? I entertain a motion for Romeo 2019 dash 034 for the Joint Powers Board Disillusion Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. I entertain a motion for Romeo 2019 dash 035 for the Joint Powers Board Trade Agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. I entertain a motion for Romeo 2019 dash 036 for the Henderson and Lesure Force Main Lift Station Cost Share Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. And last but not least, I entertain a motion for Romeo 2019 dash 037 for the Sewer Wastewater Service Contract.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Congratulations, everybody. And thank you. And again, thank you to the city of Henderson and for all the hard work they put into this as well. With that said, we are now at our comments and reports and items of appreciation. And we will start tonight with council member Huntington.
Hey, lucky me. Um, there was an MRV team meeting. Uh, someone had to yield that to Marvin because, was it?
We, we talked about it at the last meeting.
Oh, I didn't know. I wasn't here last meeting either, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't show. So, either meeting. So that was an easy one. HRAB didn't have last week due to a personal issue with, uh, our executive director.
Do you have a rescheduled date on that?
Uh, not as it's going right now. Well, everybody, let's see now. And lastly, on a personal note, I was privileged to go into the, our high school's play over the weekend, uh, Mary Poppins. So a shout to the high school. They did an awesome job. And I really enjoyed being part of that group too. So, that, I have some more to add.
Thank you so much, council member Crookman.
Yes, two things. Just a real short one is the airport commission will be meeting before our next meeting. They meet on December 5th. And we'll be meeting here in the council chambers. And a week ago, last Tuesday, uh, we had a ribbon cutting for the new sidewalks for providing a safer route to school for our students in town. Um, and council member Huntington and I were able to attend. And, uh, at that point, the, one of the people from the press asked me to make a comment. And of course, I hadn't prepared for that, okay? But I did mention that it was a safe route for our students and how much it improved and enhanced our community. But what I didn't say on the spur of the moment, and I kind of looked back and thought about, was the fact that I missed thanking our city staff. We put a lot of time on this. You know, there are things we don't see. We see a sidewalk. We may see somebody inspecting it. We know there's drainage issues, all those things. But our city staff people were getting easements for other three sidewalk pieces. That's a big job and a lot of hours and a lot of, uh, good work done by them. Now Jasper, I'm going to ask you to point to some others. We have people from the county there. I believe Mindot was there, um, maybe others. And I, I'd like you to talk about them because, again, this was a partnership. Uh, the county really was a big part of it, so.
Yeah, and so there were, uh, county, school district, uh, representatives, uh, city staff, a lot of the city staff that did a lot of the, the legwork for this, um, you know. Councilmember Crookman hit the nail on the head. This is something that was conceived in, in 2013, applied for in 2014, got the grant in 2015. Uh, but, you know, this is something that's taken a long time to, to get done. So it's a big deal. Um, you know, we're looking, now the next thing is, what are, you know, the question, when are we going to, when are the, when's the road going to get replaced now? We have really beautiful sidewalks, but the road's in terrible condition. Um, you know, so we're working on the, with the county, you know, I think this, this really, uh, has a theme of, you know, we're, we're trying to work together the best we can to come up with the best cost-effective solution for some of these things. So, you know, I think one of the, one of the good things that happened, I think, through, through this project is we have a really good relationship with the county engineer. Um, and, you know, we're, we're making progress as far as some of the county roads that go through town. And, you know, when we can expect to see some, some surface restoration work on those, which is something that, um, you know, hasn't, hasn't been planned out in the past. So. And there's some, we have, we have a lot of roads that go through, uh, Lesure that, that are county roads. So. Uh, but yeah, the county, the school district, um, and city staff were there. It was, it was a great event. It was a little chilly, but, um, yeah, it was, it was a good event.
The, the other thing I need to mention is that Bolton and May, serving as our city engineer, has been a part of this project all along. We've got a couple of city engineers because of the time. But again, in this case, Cory was there. And again, thanks to everybody. It was a project that took a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of cooperation. So thank you.
And I also would like to thank you as our president of our city council for partaking in the ribbon cutting ceremony because I could not make that event. So thank you, sir.
I enjoyed it so much I got to do it twice. You always have to have a second picture to make it right.
Sure.
But Stacy, our communications person, says she did that so we'd all smile the second time or something like that. I'm not quite sure.
It worked.
It worked.
Good for you. Thank you. Councilmember Kirby.
Um, this week, it's kind of a busy week for me. Uh, tomorrow night, 6:30, community ed meeting. Then I'll be at the ZBIR Learning Center. Hospital Board meeting, 3 o'clock tomorrow. Hope to have both of these. And then, of course, tonight, we had our EDA meeting before this council meeting. Uh, EDA, we covered the 2020 EDA budget with Zach Dow. He was there for that also. And, um, also, we had, uh, some representation there from the mall association. Visited about some of the economics and social changes that have been going on with, with, with the mall and some of the challenges they're facing in the coming months with the, uh, you know, higher utility bills and higher taxes and things. And, and, uh, we're going to be working with them and their primary lender on seeing what we can do to bring some of these payments down from them. So.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know how much further you want to dive into that, but we can.
Yeah, I think that we'll have to kind of leave it at that for the time being. Okay. Councilmember Sullivan.
Well, two weeks ago, um, me and council member Fabiles went up to the CGMC conference, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference up in Alexandria. So we spent actually two nights. So like two days, two, two-ish days up there. Um, it was a great experience, um, a lot of great presentations. I'm not going to dive specifically into them, but we did hear from, the keynote address was done by the MPCA Commissioner. Um, very interesting to listen to. And it kind of piggybacked to, it brought me and council member Fabiles back to our days last year of fighting with the MPCA over our permit for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and it was interesting that they bring up facts that we basically were fighting on. Um, but like point sources, non-point sources. And it was interesting to hear her basically dive into that and basically stand behind what we had been saying all along. So that was very, a very interesting conference, um, very worthwhile going to. I look forward to the opportunity to go again, um, just in talking to other city council representatives, mayors, administration, um, and he, hearing how things are so much alike, even as far away as Ely. Um, Ely's a very similar community, but completely on the other end of the state. Um, and then the following week, I went to the Urban AG partnership meeting on the Minnesota River in Mankato with Jasper and council member Fabiles. Another interesting meeting in regards to the pollution in the Minnesota River. Um, and what we can do as partners with AG to effectively make the river better. Tomorrow night, we have MRF Puck, um, sounds like our last meeting. Uh, as council member Kirby spoke to, we did have an EDA meeting tonight. Um, some of the things he listed, we talked about tonight. And then we also have two members that their terms end at the end of the year. So Ruth Forthrums, after, I think she said it was her 20th year on the EDA, um, has officially decided she is not going to be coming back, not put her name in the hat to come back. Um, she's currently our president or chairman. Um, and Dan Mahoney is the other one who, his term expires at the end of the year, but it sounds like he has interest in coming back. So hopefully we see his name come back into the hat. Um, heard many positive comments on the sidewalk project and the meter project. Since we've switched over to Vanguard, very positive. Um, going back to EDA, I would like to say thank you to Ruth Forthrums for 20 years. Forgot about that. That's where I was going with that. So thank you to Ruth Forthrums for 20 years.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fabiles.
Can I step back before you?
Oh, please, go ahead.
We did call a special meeting for the EDA. Um, that'll be on December 9th here on 5/15. Just because we weren't able to finish our business tonight because it ran into a meeting.
Councilmember Fabiles.
Um, CGMC, uh, not going to say it was fun. Um, it was definitely, uh, worth going to. Um, there, it, I really had no idea, uh, how many lobbyists were going to be there. It's not anything I've really ever experienced. Uh, and where the roles all play out with, um, with CGMC, the different cities. Um, you know, who belongs to what city that are actually lobbyists that, that work for, uh, for the members of CG, uh, CGMC for the issues that come up, the issues at hand. Um, they, uh,
Um, the, uh, um, meeting with, uh, Laura.
Bishop.
Bishop, who is now the, um, in charge of, of MPCA. Um, that was, that was nice. It was nice because after she had, she had discussed or, or given her presentation, I had a chance to talk with her and I got a chance to thank her for, um, all of the changes that happened from the previous administration, um, two thousand eighteen to what we went into in, in negotiations in two thousand and nineteen. And it was complete about face. It was a far more human, um, interaction than what we had before. And ultimately that's what helped get us to the agreement that we have. And, uh, she said, she thanked me for saying that because it's never come up. I guess they don't get thanked very often. I think they could yell that quite a bit. Um, it, as Marv, uh, said, uh, one of the things that we had, that we were pushing was that, uh, non-point, um, uh, access into, uh, into the rivers and, uh, and lakes. And that eighty-five percent is non-point. And, you know, they, there were legislating towards, uh, wastewater treatment facilities because that's really where they have, um, the most power to be able to regulate. Um, now they're working with the Department of Agriculture, uh, really, really working it seems with them. And, uh, some of the key speakers, they have a panel of key speakers there, um, that are doing what's called no-till on their farms. Um, it, the tilling aspect, um, creates, uh, significant easy runoff where no-till, uh, reduces that greatly. Um, and the benefits, the trade-offs that they have for doing so. Um, again, I, I live in a, in a community that has a lot of agriculture. I really have a garden. That's not the best I get, you know? Um, so to be able to, uh, to seriously talk with these people and try to understand what it is, you know, that they, that they do, uh, was important. Um, oh, what other takeaways? There was a lot that we, uh, that we got into with, uh, with, with being there. We had a lot of meetings. It wasn't what, it wasn't just going to listen to keynote, uh, people. It was really meetings. Uh, there was one at the final day, I just couldn't, I couldn't do it. There, the, uh, it got really political and that's not a me thing. I wanna know about what I can do for our community. Not about the Republican this or the Democrat that. I really wanna know what we can do for the community. Um, and then, uh, going down to, uh, to Mankato, again, we saw, um, Ms. Bishop and, uh, yeah, it, you know, it's just, it was a lot. There's a lot, uh, a lot of information to be able to take in. Um, and we have Murpuck tomorrow, our last Murpuck meeting it sounds, and we're gonna be making that one really short. And then, uh, you know, maybe some of us can, can go out and celebrate hard work that we did. We, we worked hard.
Yeah.
It's kinda, you know, it's a little bittersweet. Um, I think all of us would have liked to have seen the thing work the way it was intended to work. Um, but sometimes you just, you need to know when to throw the towel in and do a, do a better thing. And I think that that's where we're at. Um, I greatly appreciate the work that Jasper and staff did behind the scenes. Uh, I, I don't think that we would've gotten to the point that we're at without, um, the introduction of Foster and Rich into, uh, into the work. So a major shout out to Foster and Rich for the work that they put in. Um, and, uh, and the Henderson team as well. And I'd say team because that's really, in the last few months, that's how it, it was, it was being presented. It, it worked out well. So, that's it.
Well, thank you very much. I've got a couple of things. A week from this coming Friday, our residents will have an opportunity to see city council on one of our parade units. So get those snowballs ready. I understand we're looking at six to ten inches, uh, this coming, starting tomorrow.
Please, Mayor, save some for when you're back. You won't be there that night. I can't do that.
That's, that's true. That's true. And the other thing I wanna bring up is the fact that, uh, our city administrators do for his performance evaluation. So that said, uh, our communications slash HR, city clerk, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Lawrence back there, she, uh, is gonna be getting with each and every one of us to make sure you all understand what the process consists of. Some of us have done this before, but we're gonna have a personnel budget meeting. Is that the fourteenth, if I'm not mistaken? The twelfth, the twelfth of December. So what I would like to have is I would like to have your inputs for the performance evaluation uh, by the ninth, which is the ci- city council meeting that we'll have. And that way we, I can go ahead and digest that information to get it to our personnel board and personnel budget meeting on the twelfth. And we can go ahead and point out what the performance evaluation will be. So please get that done if you would. And other than that, uh, that's all I have. Uh, Director Lawrence, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. City administrator approval.
Yeah, um, two things real quick. So we might get some snow. Be aware about the posting positions. There are posting spots for snow emergencies. So K-check, uh, our website, um, we give it to K E Y C, we give it to the, the metro news outlets. Um, we try to put it everywhere we can that people can see it. So, but in general, if it snows more than two inches, try to get your, your vehicles off the roads so that we can clear it properly. I think last year was a good example of what, what could happen. I mean, we got a lot of snow in, in February in a street like Third Street. We, we would've had a real challenge of, of keeping it open, um, for traffic both ways. And it was open all, all winter long. So, uh, keep in mind, you know, it's snow emergency season and, uh, keep, keep an alert out for snow. Uh, also sidewalks, uh, you know, it's city code to keep your sidewalks clear. So, uh, you have twenty-four hours from after it stops snowing to remove that snow and ice to make sure that those sidewalks are passable. Uh, from what, what I've gathered from city councils, that's a, it's an important thing. Um, I don't think it's really been enforced to the full, uh, capacity every year. There's certain sidewalks that just get buried and, you know, there, there were situations we had to bring in, um, skid loaders to, to remove some of the snow. So we're gonna try to stay on top of it the best we can, uh, this year and, and, you know, make sure that those sidewalks are clear because it's, it's how kids walk safely to school. It's how people stay off the road. Um, they're there for a purpose and, and there's a city code for it. So, you know, en- enforce it. And if you don't, you, you might get a letter in the mail saying, uh, you know, we're gonna do it for you. So, um, keep that in mind. Um, but yeah, it's, it's at that time of year. And, um, if you have trouble finding a spot to put your vehicle, if you live in an area where you don't have off-street parking, you can always use the city-owned parking lots, um, you know, 'cause we, we clear a lot of the streets first. Um, and then we, we try to make a priority in those areas that have no off-street parking to do those. And then you can, you can park. You might have to get a ride or, or walk up to your house. But we, we really wanna make sure we can clear the roads, um, but park in the city parking lots. And, you know, you won't get a ticket. You won't get towed.
Jasper.
Yeah.
Say, is there, uh, there are plenty of people in town now that have brand-new sidewalks. Is there anything that they need to know about those sidewalks with, uh, uh, is ice melt okay to be able to put on it? Is the sand salt or what?
Yeah, so we don't have anything regulating this, but in general, uh, you shouldn't put salt on concrete. Uh, that'll lead to spalling in there. So, you know, we don't regulate it. Uh, we just ask you remove the snow, uh, but that's one of the ways the sidewalks kinda keep their, don't keep their life as long as they should as if you use some products that you shouldn't be using. So, um, best practice is just, you know, shovel, remove the snow and let the, let the sun do the rest of the work. So as long as it's clear, you're, you're pretty good and it should melt away.
Then another question. On the sidewalks, if a person wanted to seal the, the concrete, uh, in front of their house, is that acceptable?
No, um, it wouldn't be. So we don't, we don't want, in general speaking, we don't want anybody doing anything to the sidewalks. Uh, we want the city to do all of that work. Um, so there's certain areas of town and this has changed over the years. So it's understandable that, you know, that this might not be common knowledge because in the past, people have replaced their own sidewalks. They've done that type of thing. But, but what we've done moving forward and what we currently do is e- everything that's in the right way, the city, we wanna, we wanna control that. We wanna make sure that we're doing what, what we should be doing. And we don't want, uh, private property owners to, to seal their sidewalk, um, things like that. So if they do, you know, we might have to have a conversation.
Mr. Ray, if I may, I, it sparked a thought in my part too. We just talked about people having to clear the sidewalk, but as those sidewalks were put in, there were some inconvenience for our residents. Some of them, the driveways had to be redone, the abrins, there were people working in their front yards, some trees had to be moved. Um, so again, our, our thanks to the citizens who helped us accomplish that project. Cause it was for the whole community.
Well said. I just wanna remind everybody that if you have a fire plug, uh, on your property, please make sure you do what you can to keep the snow free of that. We had a situation last year where required, I think just about everybody on our fire department going out there and unbearing all the fire plugs throughout town. So that is a responsibility. We'd like you to make sure you take care of it. Did you have something?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I don't, no offense. I don't know if everybody knows what a fire plug is.
Oh, no.
The fire hydrant. The fire hydrant. So we don't have a city code that says clear the fire hydrants out. We hope that you can because if your house so happens to start on fire, we wanna be able to use that fire hydrant. Uh, we go out the best we can, but you know, in certain situations, we might, our, our higher priorities are clearing the snow off the street. So, um, it's something that I think we talked about, looking at passing the city code, saying that if you have a high fire hydrant, you're required to do it. We haven't done that. Uh, we asked that you do remove the snow and if you need help, you know, and help a neighbor out and do it. Hopefully we don't get that much snow where these things get buried. But it's important. It could, it could save your house. So it's important to do. And, you know, if we, if we have to do it again, um, and have a little event with our fire, fire department, um, you know, we can sure do that. But our street department's out there too, doing it on a day-to-day basis. It's just, you know, some of these things can pile up pretty quickly in the winter with, if we get a lot of snow.
And on behalf of our La Sure city council, and if I could speak for our city staff, happy Thanksgiving to everybody in La Sure. That's, I want to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.